All right, welcome to our first council meeting of December. I hope everyone had a really wonderful Thanksgiving and are kicking off the holiday season in a festive and healthy way. So, Madam Clerk, could you please read the adequate notice of compliance statement, please?
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the City Clerk's Office in preparation of the council annual meeting notice dated December 18th, 2023, which was properly distributed and posted per statutory requirements. Please be advised that fire exits are to my right, your left, and at the back of the room. The city has a listening system to assist the hearing impaired. If anyone needs hearing assistance, please obtain the system at the dais and return it thereafter.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Boyer?
Here.
Ms. Hamlet?
Here.
Mr. Miniger?
Here.
Mr. Pulaski?
Here.
Mr. Smallwood?
Here.
Mr. Vartan?
Present.
President McTernan.
Present. All right, this time we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance. I will lead us today. Did I miss doing that? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you. Madam Clerk, will you please read the explanatory note regarding closed session and hearing and comments?
A closed-session meeting as authorized by state statute was announced and held prior to the start of this meeting, and the known items for discussion were listed on the published closed-session agenda. Please be advised that council meetings are broadcast live on Comcast Channel 36 and Verizon Channel 30, and rebroadcast on Thursdays and Saturdays on HGTV, on Comcast 36 and Verizon 33. When invited to speak, please come to the lectern. Clearly state your name and address, spell your last name, and speak into the podium microphone so that your comments can be understood by all and properly recorded. Whenever an audience or council member reads from a prepared statement, please give or email a copy to the City Clerk's Office at cityclerk@cityofsummit.org. To help facilitate an orderly meeting and to permit all to be heard, speakers are asked to limit -- shall limit their comments to three minutes. Unless you are using an electronic device to follow the meeting agenda or need it for professional emergency contact purposes, please turn it off. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of closed and regular session meetings of November 18th, 2024?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, now we're on to our report section of our meeting. Madam Mayor, do you have a report today?
I'll be as brief as I've been in a long time, so I hope everybody had a wonderful Thanksgiving holiday and enjoyed some time off and spent time with their family. I'd also like to thank the Department of Community Programs on putting on another successful miracle on Elm Street over the weekend. It was nice to see all the residents come out and celebrate together as we start the holiday season. There are a number of other fantastic holiday events coming up this month, including the annual menorah lighting on the Village Green on Sunday, December 29th, at 6:00 PM. And Summit Downtown Inc. is hosting their popular annual events, including the horse and carriage rides around town, holiday music and carolers, and much more. More information is on the city website and on the SDI website. Also want to mention that the Department of Community Programs has a survey that's currently posted on the community programs website and on the Facebook page to give residents the opportunity to have their feedback provided for designs for Tatlock Playground. That's it, that's all I have. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Our business administrator report, Chief Evers, please.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening. Summit Police Department and Fire Department have released some holiday safety tips for the public available on the homepage of the city website. They cover important topics of the year, including package delivery safety tips and fire safety information related to holiday decorations. Please take a couple minutes to visit and review the information on the city's website. A special capital budget workshop meeting of Summit Common Council will be held on Wednesday, December 11th, at 6:30 PM in Council and Chambers at City Hall located at 512 Springfield Avenue. The meeting is open to the public and will include presentations by city staff on the 2025 capital budget. Lastly, the Fire Department had its grand opening of a new fire last Sunday. We had an amazing turnout, more than we expected, so we thank the residents, the public for all the support, and the very kind word they shared with the firefighters throughout the day. For those residents who are unable to attend the opening, we will be planning another opening sometime in the springtime. Stay tuned for information. And we plan on being operational middle of December and fully by the end of the year in that building, so. And that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So my report, I'll just start off by thanking the chief and every member of the Fire Department for getting that building open and done. It's an amazing achievement. I know they worked super, super hard. They were in there making sure that thing got done on time, under budget, and while they were doing their day job, which is keeping us safe. So, an amazing job, so just thank you, chief, and all your guys.
Thank you.
The only other thing I'd have to report today is just on our update for our full-time business administrator. We are currently deep in the process. We have another round of interviews the end of this week with what we would hope to be some finalists. We'll see how that goes, but we are still hoping that we can have a permanent business administrator sometime in the beginning of the new year. So, that's moving apace. Communications officer, we have -- we've identified a person. We're hoping that that person will be able to start literally within days. So when that happens, we'll make a full-blown announcement, but we are moving to fill these important positions. And that is my report. At this time, let's move on to our historical minute. Councilman Pulaski.
Thank you. Tonight, we have Summit High School senior Lena Kifnitis. Come on up, Lena. She's a field hockey and softball player, officer on the student council, and I think has been a student rep on the Board of Ed. Is that right, Lena? Yeah, all right. She was a solid basketball player in seventh grade, at least when I coached her. She's on this today. But we're lucky to have her here, and she's gonna do a historical minute on Summit and the Velvet Underground.
Hello. On December 11th, 1964, a so-called Cultural Revolution happened in Summit, New Jersey, when the art rock band, The Velvet Underground, performed at our own Summit High School prom. The Velvet Underground, an experimental rock band formed earlier that year, would soon become legendary, singing about controversial topics during the height of their alternative art scene of the 1960s. However, before Andy Warhol managed them or they were in the Rock and Roll Hall of Fame, the band picked up some interesting gigs when they were starting out, including performing at some -- at the Summit High School's prom. The band was the second act on the bill, following a group of 14-year-olds called the Forty Fingers, and opening for a headlining local garage band, The Middle Class. The Middle Class already had a decent local following and had COVID and songs with Carole King and Jerry Joffin. Many of the teens, followers of The Middle Class, came wearing their finest clothing, but The Velvet Underground, staying true to their eclectic sound and style, wore all-black androgynous clothing, had flowing long hair and shining silver jewelry. No one knew what to expect when the band took the stage, but the speakers suddenly surged with a pounding beat. The band played songs like Venus and Furs and I'm Waiting for a Man. According to Sterling Mauringsen, The Velvet Underground guitarist, the response was ride-ranging. Teachers, students, and parents fled screaming. The Velvet Underground's Summit High School gig marked the band's first performance with Mo Tucker and its first performance outside of Manhattan's hippie downtown. It also marked the start of the band's cult-like following, exemplified by the backlash the local newspaper received when a teen columnist insulted the band's music. A group identifying as some Velvet Underground fans responded to the column, stating, "You're not a music critic." Sadly, the camera filming the performance went missing that night, and we can't exactly relive this music history in the making, but many suspect the band stole the camera. Overall, through my research of her talents, brush with fame, I learned that Summit has always been an extensive patron of the arts, even in the 60s. I hope we can have an exciting band like The Velvet Underground perform at our next prom. Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, we have no presentations this evening, so we're gonna go -- no ordinances, so we're going right to resolutions. We're gonna start off with finance resolutions. Councilman Miniger, finance resolution number one, please.
Thank you, Council President. This is number 11619, and this resolution authorizes the intra-budget transfer of appropriations from accounts with a surplus to those that are over. This is a regular occurrence in the last two months and first three months of the fiscal year, and this particular set of transfers totals $179,100. I move to adopt this resolution.
My second.
Comments from the public? Comments from council? All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, we need a roll call on this one, okay.
Sorry.
Mr. Boyer?
Yay.
Ms. Hamlet?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
Mr. Pulaski?
Aye.
Mr. Smallwood?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
President McTernan?
Aye. Motion carries. All right, finance resolution number two, Councilman Miniger.
Thank you, Council President. This is number 11617, and this resolution authorizes the schedule of payments. A quick explanation of how this works. The city collects taxes and pays them to the schools. Earlier this year, there was a similar resolution for payments from July through December. The school's fiscal year is July 1 through June 30 of the following year, and the city's fiscal year is the calendar year. So this resolution updates the payments amounts, payment amounts, and the dates for the remaining half of the school's fiscal year, which is January 2025 through June 2025. Each payment is in the amount of $6,102,828. I move to adopt this resolution.
My second.
Comments from the public, please? Comments from council? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Finance number three, Councilman Miniger.
Thank you, Council President. This is number 11618, and this resolution authorizes the municipal sewer, parking, and school debt service payments. This is done every year. It includes principal and interest amount, interest payments on all bonds and notes in those respective categories. I move to adopt this resolution.
My second.
Comments from the public? Comments from council? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Finance number four, Councilman Miniger.
Thank you, Council President. This is number 11616, and this resolution authorizes a professional services agreement for tax appeal council services for 2025 in an amount not to exceed $110,000. The agreement with DeFrancesco Bateman Kunsmann Davis Lehrer &amp; Flauem PC includes no rate increase over the prior year. I move to adopt this resolution.
My second.
Comments from the public? Comments from council? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Finance number five, Councilman Miniger.
Thank you, Council President. This is number 11598, and this resolution authorizes a two-year extension of an existing contract for walk-in hardware and building supplies purchases by the city at a convenient local location without having to go through a purchase order or quote process, and it prevents the city from having to keep an inventory of parts and supplies, et cetera. This agreement with Summit Industrial Hardware Incorporated is in an annual amount not to exceed $60,000. I move to adopt this resolution.
I have a second? Do I hear a second?
I'm sorry, I have a second, but I have a question, so.
All right, first, let's go -- questions from the public? All right, comments or questions from council? Councilwoman Hamlet?
As I was trying to second, I was coming up with my question, which I just started. I guess my question is, do we need a second quote for this since it's this certain amount, Tammy, or no? Just asking, because I truly don't know the answer.
That's okay, through you, Council President. We use the local hardware, so I'm not sure if she received more than one quote at the QPA, but she goes with the easier access for the -- you're on a job and you need a couple of screws, you're not gonna come in and do a purchase order and all of that. So I don't think we exceeded the quote threshold last year for that.
Okay. Any other questions from council? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Finance number six, Councilman Miniger.
Thank you, Council President. This is number 11603, and this resolution, per closed-session discussion, declares a vacancy in the position of Assistant City Treasurer in the Finance Department. I move to adopt this resolution.
My second.
Comments from the public? Comments from council?
What was that resolution that you mentioned? Because I think I disagree with what we have here.
The number I had was 11603.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's not on our --
Sorry, 11654.
You're right. I don't know how I got that on there. Thank you.
Yep.
Through you, Council President, it's number 11654.
Thank you for the correction, sir.
Thank you.
So it's to declare a vacancy. Any comments from the public? Comments from council? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we're moving right along to law and labor number one, Councilman Pulaski.
Thank you. This is resolution ID number 11597, to authorize continuance of the mayor's task force on homelessness in Summit. Mayor Fagan has put together a great team to help address the homeless situation in Summit. It includes our first responders and a spread of community leaders, including representatives from nonprofits like Bridges and Grace. Their good work isn't over, so they may continue their mission. I move we adopt this resolution.
My second.
Thank you. Comments from the public, please? Comments from council? Yes, Madam Mayor?
I just want to give a quick update because I was hoping that we didn't have to continue this. Obviously, we have made some strides, we have made some differences, and we have helped house some of our unhoused folks that have been living in Summit unhoused for some time, and we're hoping to continue that mission, so thank you, council members, for supporting this.
Thank you. Other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Law and Labor number two, Councilman Pulaski.
This is resolution ID number 11613, to authorize 2025 city solicitor slash labor council services. Each year, we renew the city's contract with our city solicitor and our labor council, who are one and the same, the Cleary Giacobi Firm. Their work is excellent, their rates are competitive, and I recommend we authorize the Cleary Giacobi Firm to continue as our city solicitor and labor council, and I move to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Do I have any comments from the public? Comments from council? I'll just make one. I want to just thank Matt for all his hard work. He's been a great -- I mean, as I've kind of parachuted back in here, he's been a great person to go to with questions and stuff, and super knowledgeable. I think we're lucky to have him.
Agreed.
Agreed.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, moving right along, we've got Administrative Policies and Community Services, Councilman Vartan.
Thank you, Council President. This is ID, resolution ID number 11612, to authorize professional services agreement with our -- for our 2025 risk management consultant, which is AccraSure LLC. They've been the city's risk manager since 2018. The rate will remain the same, at 6% of the premium cost that is paid for by the joint insurance fund. They have done a good job, and the rate, they've done a good job for the same rate as the previous risk manager. I move to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Comments from the public? Comments from council? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we're moving to Safety and Health. There's one resolution. Councilman Boyer.
Thank you, Council President. This is resolution ID number 11641, authorizing the appointment of three new probationary career firefighters. These firefighters have successfully completed the Fire Department's interest exam process. The appointments will become effective December 30 of 2024. The appointments will fill vacancies on the department that were approved by the Common Council's -- by the Common Council earlier this year. The candidates are currently members in good standing of the Volunteer Division and have been interviewed and approved by the Safety Committee. I move to adopt this resolution.
Second. Comments from the public? Comments from council? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, one resolution from Capital Projects and Community Services, Councilwoman Hamlet.
Thank you, Council President. This is ID 11622. This resolution, as discussed in closed session, will be to declare a vacancy for the lead technical assistant to the construction officer. Again, this was pending closed-session discussion tonight, and I move to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Comments from the public? Comments from council? Can we say that this is called taco?
We've talked a lot about this tonight. This is called the taco. Director Schreger, do you want to talk about this a little bit, or just it's sort of a different, new position that we had previously had?
Yes, through you, Council President, and the position is actually determined, it's actually defined by the state in the UCC code. What it essentially is, is a person who has the technical assistance certification, but you're technically the lead directly to the construction official, so it would kind of be of currently, while we have three staff members up front, this would be the one that would oversee them and kind of be a bridge between the frontline and the construction officials. So it's a little more technical and construction-oriented than just the staff up front, but a very important position, and it helps us move forward as we look to succeed in the future.
Awesome, thank you. Any other comments or questions from council?
May I just, I guess, one more, Council President? Just to further clarify that this was not in the operating budget for 2024, but I would imagine that this is something that the state requires, Director Schreger, so we will have to put this in our budget for 2025?
Yes, correct, and the UCC, also the construction office, is funded through fees, so it's not a taxpayer-funded division. But yes, they would still have to budget for it to make sure it's there. The position is defined in the salary ordinance, but we just need to budget for it, and the timing is good, because here we approach the calendar, flipping a page.
Thank you for explaining the taco.
All right, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, consent agenda time. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All right, do I have any comments on the consent agenda from the public? Any comments from council?
Through you, Council President?
Yes, please, Mr. Miniger.
I am pretty excited that Earth Day is coming up again. I've participated in that a few times. I read through here, and I noticed that there are considerations for locations, and I'm wondering, do we know when that will be announced, the cleanup locations?
I mean, I'll pass this along to Director Schreger. I know one of the ones that we're trying to add, I think it was for this year, was actually the downtown. I'm not sure if it's officially been designated yet. I think we have as an optional one, but I'm not sure if -- Kevin, if you know, or Director Schreger, one will be announcing that.
So I could see you, Council President. First, I just want to thank the Summit Environmental Commission, because they always get this very far in advance, so we never miss this. So obviously, we're planning for what's essentially almost four months ahead, which is great. So as a result, yes, they've left it not, you know, fully confirmed where they'll be, but in the weeks leading up to it, they'll announce specifically where they are. They have taken on the downtown in the last few years. They have been there, so I'm sure they'll be there again, so. But finalize will be as the weeks, as we approach near the date, so.
Yeah, and just on that date, I think, what is it, scheduled last weekend of March, the 29th and the 30th? So they are planning way ahead.
Yes.
This is great. Any other comments from council? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, consent agenda passes. All right, at this stage of our meeting, we are now at public comments. Please remember the Madam Clerk's admission, keep your comments to three minutes or less, please, and state your name and your address as you approach the podium. Oh, and staff, you guys, have a good evening. Thank you for coming. I was gonna say, go in once.
Carlos Hernandez from 85 Butler Parkway here in Summit. Good evening, Mr. McTernan. I haven't had the pleasure of meeting you, so I haven't attended one of these meetings, so you were appointed, so congratulations.
Thank you.
I also want to acknowledge the email that you sent me in response to my concern. So I saw the email that came out of the Department of Community Programs last Friday. Thank you for that. You took pretty quick action. I read your statement that you sent in clarification, so thank you. Well done, and I think it resets the tone, although I do think that damage was done by the DCP in sending that email. That email was pretty sophisticated, used graphics, used the logos of the Department of Community Programs, so it is definitely very concerning, and I think you share that concern. I'm not sure if you have any further understanding as to why that happened and what steps have been taken to prevent it. I also would like to understand if you expected or required the DCP to send the same statement that you put in social media to the mailing list that the DCP used to communicate, because not everybody's in social media, but they do have access to email. And then the last point that I make, the meeting on Wednesday that's coming up to discuss the studies. Two of the studies have been provided in draft form. One study has not been provided in draft form, and I heard as of last night, that study had not been concluded, yet apparently the DCP already communicated in that email on Friday that that study reflected no problem. So wonder why the disconnecting there. The study has not been completed, and it should have been published so that it could be discussed on Wednesday with people having enough information to have an informed conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. I guess I can speak to a couple of those things. We have begun conversations around revamping or clarifying our communications process. It's clear that there was not a lot of things written down around it, which is an issue and needs to be fixed. So that is going to go on, and we will get something that department heads and council people have a very clear understanding about, how do you communicate proposals versus city projects? Because there is a difference, and so that is something that we're going to work on. As far as the meeting, my understanding is that the, that field study report, which is, I think, what you're alluding to, they are almost done with it. I asked the same question that you just asked, and it should be ready. I think the DCP committed that they would release these studies as soon as they got them in, which is why the other ones went up on the websites when they did. This one's, they're still putting the finishing touches on it, and they do know they need to have it for tomorrow, but they want to make it as comprehensive and as clear as possible, and that's why they're still working on it.
They should not have stated a conclusion on it, because it's not ready. Right, so, thank you.
Thanks.
I also want to comment, I did get an email with your statement today, this morning, so if you didn't, I received it. I did receive an email from the DCP with Council President McTernan's statement, so you should have received that as well.
I'll check. I don't sure I think. Thank you for the --
You're welcome.
Hi, Kelly Ica Valley, 151 Colonial Road. I know the meeting is tomorrow night regarding the proposed lights. I just wanted to come and express my views and my thoughts. As we all know, there've been lights at Tatlock for many years on the upper field, as well as down by the tennis courts. There's a strong need in Summit to have more field space in this town for a variety of reasons. Lights will help solve a lot of the issue and add additional benefits for our broader community, not just athletes. Having coaches, having coached across a variety of sports in this town, it's very frustrating when half of your regular season games or practices are ended early due to darkness. Families pay for these programs and should be able to see their children play games in their entirety. Or when fields are closed because of rain, teams could then be reallocated to Tatlock if there were lights there. Sports in this town have grown considerably. Example, year-round baseball, year-round soccer, year-round lacrosse, the addition of girls' flag football, the addition of a youth field hockey program. These are all very positives for our children. Active youth help reduce screen time, obesity, and have many other benefits. Lights at Tatlock, as many have tried to say, will not just benefit football and lacrosse. They would benefit all sports across the community and the entire community. The broader community as a whole can also benefit. Many families in Summit both have working parents. Being able to come home in the evening and go to the track to workout in a safe environment would be an added benefit. Parents can get off of work, take their sons or daughters to the field, and spend some time in the early evening. I live across from the high school. I've lived there for over 20 years, so I understand residents' concerns, and we have had a variety of issues over the years that we have had to deal with pertaining to the high school and lights. But I knew living across from the school would have positives and also negatives. I can say the positives have absolutely outweighed the negative. I think there's a way to add lights with guidelines. For example, limit when the PA system can be used. Buses should only be parking in Washington School parking lot when available. In addition, parking should be restricted to one side of Butler Parkway, the field side, and enforced. Scheduling also a break between practice and or games for 15 minutes so traffic can get out and new traffic can come in. All these things can, with guidelines, can help us manage lights at Tatlock. Thank you.
Thank you. If you have a prepared statement, could you please just leave it with the clerk? Thank you. Other public comments?
Jocelyn Modesto, 61 Butler Parkway. I didn't come with a prepared statement, but I just wanted to address some of the comments that were just said. One of the things is that light should be put at Tatlock. This way, there can be more use of the fields. Everything that we've heard so far is that people want more turf fields. We heard at the boosters meeting that people will wait later to practice because they're waiting for turf fields and not use perfectly good grass fields, or what they don't consider to be perfectly good. As far as the rain that you can reallocate to Tatlock, if other fields were turfed, then they wouldn't have to be postponed or canceled due to rain. If we turfed more of the fields, we also wouldn't have to close them over the late fall until early spring while they get reseeded. So that would also open up more time for sports teams to use the field. We can also reduce screen time and obesity if we turf more fields. I think the whole point of this, what I'm trying to get at, is that everyone needs to do their fair share. Every field needs to pick up more of the slack instead of Tatlock and the high school all in Washington District having all of our fields turfed, having three-quarters of our fields lit as they're proposing. I mean, there's other ways to do this with distributing the burden here. We're just trying to stick up for our neighborhood like every other neighborhood has in the past. Wilson Neighbors fought against having their field turfed, and it was not turfed. Franklin was supposed to be turfed the same time as Washington. It has yet to be turfed. Memorial, we've all heard this one before, right? The neighbors would have a fit. Memorial was talked about to have lights at their tennis court, yet they don't have them, and they were put at Tatlock. So we just feel like Tatlock is taking on a lot of the burden that some of the other places can step up, and there are other solutions to this field crisis. But again, as Carlos said, they've already said the conclusion that there is a field crisis yet. We haven't seen the report. They've had months to work on this report since this discussion started in January or February, so it's very frustrating that we are going to get a report tomorrow and then be expected to intelligently have a conversation about it. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. Diego Hoitgen in Argyle Court, and apologize, I forgot my reading glasses. Council President, I think it's important that the 2025 budget receive a unanimous vote, and for this reason, on November 14th, I sent you an outgoing, Finance Chair Andy Meneger, an email outlining a few common sense suggestions to achieve this goal by improving the budget process. In essence, we can get better alignment if we set a goal for maximum percent increase to the levy so that the tax rate can be reduced if ratables remains, ratable growth remains strong. I suggest a one and a half percent cap to the levy to increase, to the levy increase to limit increases in spending. My eyesight is doing a number on me. This discipline will serve us well whenever ratables go against us. Related, set a goal for percentage growth in operational expenses versus 2024 latest estimate instead of versus 2024 budget. I suspect I preached to the choir when I said this is what most successful companies do. B, improve the capital budgeting process by following these common sense steps. One, agree to a level of spending for each year consistent with our desired debt position in future years. If the city were to keep to the 2024-29 capital budget as is, in three years, our debt would grow 19% to reach 74 million. That's 5 million higher than when the firehouse was paid for, and 11 million higher than last year. No one wants such a high debt, so projects must come off the 2025 and 26 capital budgets. A way to do this, group projects by type before prioritizing. For example, bucket one, routine, projects that require consistent spend every year. An example, repaving. Every year, we should fix different streets but spend similar amounts of money. Bucket two, necessary upgrades, essentially one-off projects that must happen, such as repairing the Anderson Field House. Bucket three, nice-to-haves, discretionary one-off projects that improve quality of life for our neighbors. Projects can be prioritized after council decides how much money to allocate to each bucket. The administrator, CFO, department heads can propose specific projects for each bucket while making public lists of desirable projects that are not funded. I remain ready to help this council bring these common sense ideas to fruition. Thank you.
Thank you. Other public comments? You can only speak once, Mr. Hernandez, sorry. Well, we can, we can talk offline. Okay, thank you. Any other public comments? All right, we're going to close public comment session and go to council members, comments, and new business. We'd like to, I know some of you have some comments on new business.
I do, but if you can come back to me.
You want to go last? All right, who would like to go?
I could go first. I just have a.
Please. Yes, please, Councilman Boyer.
I just want to let our residents know about the Know to Protect Program. No.
It's actually Know to Protect, yeah. I was the one that's, you know, dyslexic on the email, you know. I'm thrilled to announce that we've teamed up with the Department of Homeland Security and our Summit Board of Education and our National PAL to bring you Know to Protect Program. This is a parent-only event, and it will be held on January 27th, 2025, at the Summit Middle School. This is a national public awareness campaign launched by DHS in April 2024 aimed at preventing and combating online child sex exploitation and abuse. This important session is designed to provide parents with prevention, education, reporting, and support. A highlight of the project is where experts from Homeland Security Investigations Team will share real-world case studies and actionable advice to help you protect your family. This initiative is supported by partnerships such as tech leaders, Google, Meta, Snap Incorporated, and Roblox, as well as national sports leagues amplifying its reach across our communities. Please, don't miss this event. This is a parents-only event. I think they get really deep into details about how to protect our children. If you need more information, feel free to contact me. I know the city will be promoting this as well. Thank you, Council President. Actually, just one more thing. It was an honor and a privilege to be able to march down the street from the old firehouse to the new firehouse, and this past year, working with Chief Evers, has been a pleasure. We've been really pushing to get this thing done. He's been putting up with us, you know, and these change orders coming in, and you and your staff have been working hard. We have a state-of-the-art firehouse, and as people are driving up Broad Street, I mean, you can see it. It is a jewels remarkable, and summer residents should be really proud. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Boyer. Other comments?
I'll make a couple of comments.
Yeah, please, Councilman Vartan. Look, we can't be out of here at this hour. My wife won't know what's going on if I come home this early.
Anybody with money on nine o'clock is out of it anyway, so it's fine. So I'll have much more to say, you know, next week. But on my way out the door from council, there are a few things that were brought up tonight I want to dig into a little bit, and then there's another thing I just want to talk about for a second. So first, I want to largely agree with the capital budget meeting coming up next Wednesday. I think the quote is, "Don't tell me what you value. Show me your budget, and I'll tell you what you value," right? And I think it's not just what's in it. It's not just what's in the budget versus what's not in the budget. It's the prioritization of those things that is a very important thing for this community to have from this council. Clear direction from this council on this is, this is our prioritization of these things will help not only, not only with the budget part of it, not only with the debt part of it, but with the public relations part of it, with the community engagement part of it. Which brings me to the second point about regardless of your position on lights, regardless of your position on any capital project, a city department, we, I think we, most of us agree, a city department should just not be advocating in that way, using city resources to push an agenda. And I, and I look forward to us digging into that, and when we have a city administrator, when we have a communications director putting down on paper how that should go. But I mean, we have a lot, we've had a lot of conversations this year about accusations of partisanship up here and disagreement being construed as just rank partisanship. And I think that that, you know, that's, that's not right. But I think what's, what's a bigger deal is when, you know, my understanding is the second on this committee, the DCP committee, didn't even know this, this email was coming out. I certainly didn't know it was coming out, and I'm the chair of admin, right? So we have to, we have to address that stuff so that the community doesn't get divided further. And then the third thing is I also do want to talk about the Fire Department. First of all, to highlight what you, Council President, highlighted before, which is that we did come in, this project did come in under budget, which I think is worth saying again. So thank you for that. I was, I was, I had a cold and did not want to get anybody else sick walking with, with people in the parade and coming in. But again, my words of congratulations to you and the entire department on, on the opening of the firehouse. I also just want to say, just seeing you around town and getting the notifications, Fire Department has been extremely busy, and just want to say thank you for keeping us all safe and knocking down that especially fire yesterday very quickly. So thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman Vartan. Councilwoman Hamlet?
Thank you. Greg, I think your comments are actually, at least for me, very well received, and I also struggle a little bit with the budget process as we go into the capital budget workshop, and I know this is something we've been doing for a long time, and we've been doing it the same way. But I think as almost a brand-new council, not only do we have to prioritize, but reprioritize because we do do it by department, and while that may make sense, I do think as a, from a top-down approach, I think it may make some sense to reprioritize. So I think, Diego, I think your comments around the buckets make a lot of sense to me. They resonate with me, not all of them, but some of them. And Greg, I do think perhaps we should look at, you know, do we want to spend more money on playgrounds and not five-ton trucks this year? So let's have those conversations. You might have to be a little bit more patient. Our CFO just got new software to run our budget, so I think that we're going to give her an opportunity to, to look at it a little differently, so thank you for your comments on that. And I guess the other comment I had is the mayor and I spent the day over at Bristol Myers Squibb. Was it yesterday? It seems like it was.
It seems like 100 years ago it was yesterday.
It was two days ago. We got an invitation along with Senator to kind of any other government officials to go visit Bristol Myers Squibb. It was really moving. There was, they treat blood cancers like multiple myeloma, lymphoma, and it was a really good opportunity to see how those processes work. One of the, the other reasons it's important for you is the community is because we definitely hear about concerns over noise violations and in-and-out traffic, so we got a better understanding for what they are challenged with and how we can work together to advocate for you in the community. So hopefully, that will be a benefit, and they'll be a continued partner for us. I know they donated to the firehouse. Hopefully, we'll be getting a grant from them soon, so, and hopefully, that's for playground equipment, so we're excited for that. And the last thing I would say is the paddle courts started, I believe, last week. They'll start officially Thursday, and hopefully, they'll be done within seven to 10 days. So Greg, I challenge you to game of paddle. I know you didn't want to, but I challenge, I challenge you to play some paddle up there with us, and, but thanks for your comments.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hamlet. Councilman Palowski?
Thank you. First, I want to thank Chief Evers and his department for a great grand opening. The sheer joy on the faces of the children and the adults alike throughout that day was heartwarming, was a great experience, and made me proud to be a hilltopper. Second, I want to commend and thank Councilman Boyer for taking the initiative to address this important issue that we're all worried about with our, with our children. So thank you for that. And so, as to Councilman Vartan's comments, certainly mere disagreement is not partisanship, right? It's not rank partisanship. So coming out and saying, "I don't agree that paddle courts is the best use of this money. Maybe we should put it into a playground or something else." That's disagreement. Saying, "I don't like your pet project because I think the money should go someplace else" kind of takes it to another level. So, you know, we all need to take some accountability as to how we, how we phrase things, and let's not, you know, discount what was actually said and attribute it to mere disagreement. I think we can all, all do better in that regard, and we should. Thank you.
Other comments? Councilman Smallwood?
Thank you, Council President. I have a couple of things. One, congratulations to Matt on his appointment for next year as our council. I will be, I believe the understanding is I have to move to the next chair. So in the next council year, I'm not quite sure how we're going to be able to determine whether it's the over or under. Tonight, Matt took the under of 8:30, so how much time do I have to speak? So congratulations. Chief Evers, congratulations to you on the opening of the new firehouse. Unfortunately, I was sick as well and was unable to attend, but I'm sure it was, it was a great event. I saw the pictures online, so congratulations.
Thank you.
I want, the last council meeting, we had a presentation from a group of ladies who spoke about wait until eighth, and that is a program that is encouraging parents as well as their children to wait until the end of eighth grade to stay off social media. I'm proud to announce that we are having a meeting with the mayor, the council president, and the Department of Community Programs to find out ways that, how we can work with them and their program, and we're meeting with them on Friday at 3:30, so I'm really looking forward to that. So again, thank you to the ladies that came in that gave that presentation last year. With regards to the email that was sent on Friday, you know, the Department of Community Programs, you know, sends out emails on a constant basis, and I don't think they've ever gone through the admin to get approval. However, they have in the past worked with our communications department, and since we currently, you know, haven't hired a, or at least haven't received our, our new communications director, I will take full responsibility for that. You know, this was something that, you know, some of us may disagree about the fact that the Department of Community Programs and the Department of Community Programs Advisory Board has been, on their, lights at Tatlock have been on their radar since 2018. I believe that's when the first presentation has been given. And, you know, if the department that is proposing a project can't promote or ask for support for their program, who, who is? So maybe the wording of the email probably was a little strong and offended some others that are, are against the that are against the lights at Tatlock, and I would like to apologize for that. That's something that I could have possibly worked with the Department of Community Programs on their email, on maybe some better messaging. So I will take certainly full responsibility for that. As for the field use study, we've changed it a couple of times because when it's going to be, when it's going to be emailed to or put on the website, I'm not sure if it's going to be emailed, but the email, it will be on the website this evening. It is not just a spreadsheet, it is actually in presentation form of how it will be presented tomorrow evening. So, Mr. Gonzalez, it will be coming out tonight. I'm not sure of the exact time, but it will be, you know, it will certainly be there by tomorrow morning. I just don't know what time it'll be on the website tonight, but it will be coming out tonight. So, you know, we have had five meetings. Am I, I'm just kind of dragging this on, Matt, I'm sorry.
What's paying you, because I'll pay you more.
Yeah. So, you know, we have had five meetings with the Tatlock neighborhood, and we have listened to a lot of their comments, and we've tried the best we can this year to make some adjustments. You know, at the beginning of the spring, you know, the buses used to park on Butler Parkway and just leave the buses there for the entire game from the traveling team. We have worked with the high school and the athletic director there to move those buses once they drop off the students or they're banned, to move those buses either to the high school parking lot or the Washington School parking lot, to start alleviating some of that traffic that it used to back up on Butler Parkway. And there are some other things that we have tried to, you know, implement with some of the feedback that we've received from those five meetings. And tomorrow, at tomorrow's meeting is the field presentation, the traffic study, and the environmental study, I would encourage anyone who is for it or against it. And in terms of partisanship, you know, this is not a political issue. There are members of the Tatlock neighborhood who are Republican and Democrat that are completely against the Tatlock lights, and I completely respect that. And there are members of the community at large who are Republican and Democrat that are for the Tatlock lights because they see a need for it. So, this is not a partisan issue, this is a community issue, and as a council, we need to weigh all of those options. And again, the email that was sent out on Friday was definitely from the Department of Community Programs and the Department of Community Programs Advisory Board. So, with that, I would encourage anyone who is interested in learning more about those studies to please attend tomorrow night's meeting at the middle school at 7:15, and, you know, it's, this is an opportunity for everyone to be able to voice their opinions. That's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you.
Three, Council President?
Yes, please, Councilman Miniger.
So, Kevin, I know, excuse me, Councilmember. You are taking responsibility for this, thank you for saying that. I do want to know, though, did you request the email be sent out on Friday? Did you request that directly? And if you did, why didn't you let me know about it? I know it's not a committee thing, we didn't discuss it at all in committee, but I didn't hear a single thing about it, and I'm wondering what I need to do as second in that committee to get the privilege of either being able to have a message sent out per my request or at least knowing about what is being discussed regarding outreach to the city? And I'm hoping that that is part of what's going to be changing in the future with Council President's directive changes. I'm wondering if that can be put into effect immediately with some kind of statement, like, "We cannot, we can't do that, we can't send out messages without, I don't know, without going through someone on the, you know, Council President's temporary communication group or whatever." I am also interested, because I did hear multiple mentions of the field study report. I requested it, excuse me, field use study. I requested that information a couple of days ago, and I was told that I would get it by the end of the day yesterday. What really is a problem, I don't need it in final PDF or PowerPoint format, I need that information that everyone, literally everyone else has seen. Everyone on community programs, everyone on the Department of Community, the DCP Advisory Board, I'm guessing you, and I'm guessing you, Council President, have seen some type of information. If something is mentioned in email that says, "We need, we have a severe lack of field availability," I'm guessing that is based on some kind of report or fact. And if not, then it's based on, it's based on a talking point, so. Changing how we deal with requests from council members who are in a committee would also be something worth visiting. That's all.
Thank you.
Council President?
Yes, Councilman Boyer?
I just want to point out that I'm still waiting for the environmental report for the Park Line, which I requested like a month ago. So, you know, I just, this, just to agree with Councilman Smallwood, this is, let's not make this a political issue, right? This is not ours versus these, this is a community thing, right? And I don't want anyone to be pushing that agenda. It doesn't always have to be Republicans versus Democrats, right? Like, we hate what they want, we dislike what, you know. Have your opinion about the lights? I haven't expressed my opinion on the day yet about it, but the reason why I just want to speak out is because I don't want this to trickle down into, "This is a Republican thing, this is a Democrat thing." It's not. This is a community issue, we should treat it like that. This was proposed in 2018 by the Department of Community Service, and this council happens to be dealing with it now. So, I just want to say that, because I, it's trickling in, right? And I want it to stay out, that this is a Republican-Democrat thing. This is not. We're going to handle this as a community, and tomorrow, we'll hear what the community has to say. Thanks.
Councilwoman Hamlet?
I'll be super quick. The one thing I will say is when I first got on council, and Councilman Miniger and I were on the same committee, that was an opportunity for us to, at that point, voice some concerns. As a brand-new council member, we were committing a certain amount of money to the Musco lighting study and proposal, so we certainly hadn't asked for a field user study to allocate funds then, and I totally agree with you, I have not seen the field user data, I haven't seen, Mr. Gonzalez, I haven't seen any of the studies yet. I have, I have made the decision to look at them with all of you so that I could objectively look at all these studies, and I'm looking forward to doing that, so stay tuned. The other thing I wanted to mention is there was some comments today on social media regarding the K Lot, and someone had asked how many spots we would be losing, so the K Lot will be losing 20 spots with the restriping. The one thing I also wanted to point out, Greg, I'm not sure if you're aware of this, I saw some comments on social media today, but those lines are actually in accordance with our current ordinance. So if you look at our current ordinance, the lines are now nine by 18 feet, and before, I believe it was about eight, eight feet by.
Eighteen.
Eight feet by 18. So, hopefully you'll be able to park there, that lot hasn't been full, so, in speaking with the parking director, she has full confidence that that's the right thing to do, and I just wanted to say I fully support being able to actually park in that lot.
Thank you. Councilman Vartan?
One more quick thing, and then, I know people have money to make on 9:30 now. Oh, 8:30, right, right. So, I just want to come back to it one more time. The Booster's email said, "All voices should be heard at this meeting," and then they gave the meeting date and time. I think that's what should have come from the city. I think it needs to be said again that I disagree with Councilman Smallwood in the strongest possible terms. I believe no city department, no city advisory committee should be using city resources to advance an agenda. I will disagree with you on that. And then I will also just, again, disagree with the K Lot. I don't think we should have spent the money to do that. That's where I'll leave it. Thank you.
Council President?
Who's got the over?
I do.
Shocking, shocking. Councilman Smallwood?
I did want to say, you know, Councilman Vartan, this is the only lot in our downtown that is, the width is eight feet versus the nine feet that we have in every other single lot. You know, we've received letters from law firms because of damages being done to cars, and we have pictures that they've sent us. So, I would also like to keep the city out of a lawsuit. Additionally, you know, when you think about capital projects, you know, we initially budgeted $20,000 for this project, but we were able to tie it in with another restriping project, which lowered the cost of restriping the K Lot from $20,000 to $13,000. So we've saved $7,000 by thinking creatively, outside of the box, and tying it in with another project. So, you know, I don't, losing 20 spaces in a lot that is not full on a regular basis by more than 20 spaces, and making that lot in regulation size in accordance with our ordinance, I don't understand how you're against it.
Yeah. Other comments?
President, if I may say?
Yes, please, Chief.
Thank you for kind words before about the Fire Department, appreciate it. I think just saying that you're only successful as people like that surround you, and throughout this project, we've been surrounded by some amazing people, from this current council to past council, to citizens, to summit stakeholders, and foundations really made this product a success. Most of all, men and women of Summit Fire Department, with that, their dedication and service and hours of time, they put in the rough time, this product would never have happened. So without their help, without their dedication, this product's really, they've evolved the credit for this product, so appreciate it, and buildings open to the public, anytime I come out for a tour, we're definitely here to accommodate, so thank you.
Thank you. All right, I will wrap it up then, if there's no more comments. Good? Okay. Just a couple of things. One, just on the Capitol Budget Project, I just wanted to echo what people said, it is December 11. Every year, I've seen this, people talk a lot about the Capitol Budget and what they think it should be on it or whatever, no one from the public shows up. I shouldn't say no one. Very few people ever show up. It's just a fact. If you want to show up, please do, we would welcome you to come, okay? It is a long night, but, you know, given all the rhetoric around it, I would encourage people to get involved. I do know, you know, we have one of the few municipalities in New Jersey that is AAA rated by all the rating agencies, three. That is an amazing, impressive statistic. I know my first go-around on council, when I was on finance, I said, "That has got to be our number-one goal to continue to keep that rating," and I know Tammy and her predecessors have worked really, really hard to make that happen. We actually created a bond issuance program that had metrics to facilitate how much debt we would issue every year, understanding that AAA lowered the cost of borrowing for all our residents and was super, super important. I don't know where that went. So, I left council, and I think that left with me. However, maybe that is something to look at again. So please, attend, it's important. About tomorrow's meeting, so I think my statement I made on the website says what my opinion is around what type of correspondence should be sent out by city departments. I do think there is a difference, my personal opinion, a difference between proposals and programs. And as of now, the Tatlock Field Project is a proposal. It's not, it's not a city initiative yet, or a city project yet, sorry. So I do think that that is an important distinction. For tomorrow, what I would hope, this is a, I think was billed as an informational session with an opportunity for feedback. Please, what I would ask people who come, whether you have a strong opinion going in, go in with an open mind, too, whether you're going one way or the other. Listen to what's said. You know, if you go in not thinking you can change your mind, you won't. So be open-minded, and if you do have an opinion, which I know we all are entitled to it, if you have comments, let's make sure we're disagreeing with other people's opinions and we don't denigrate the speaker. We're all entitled to have our opinion. If we oppose it, you'll have valid reasons, and if you want it, talk about the logic behind it, don't talk about the speaker, okay? We're all neighbors here at the end of the day, and I think it is a very valid point that this should not be a partisan issue. This is about a project, it affects one neighborhood more than others, that's a fact, and we have to figure out whether this makes sense, that that neighborhood should, if it has, if there is an undue burden on that neighborhood, maybe we should go with a Plan B. But if there's not, maybe then we should go with it. I have never expressed an opinion on it because I am still gathering information on it, and I'm looking forward to seeing the reports explained tomorrow. I have an open mind. And on that, just the last thing I'd say on this, this is not the end of community engagement around this proposal. The mayor and I have been speaking about having yet another meeting, if people want to do that, but one where tomorrow is not an open meeting, there'll be a lot of council people there, but because it's not a noticed meeting, we can't engage with the public, because if we did, we'd have to notice it, Rosie'd have to take notes the entire time, it'd have to be filmed. There's a lot of rules around a public meeting, so this will not be a public meeting tomorrow. However, the mayor and I have been talking about having a real town hall sometime in the, maybe end of January, whatever, we'll get that going, where we will have a schedule of council people to attend, where we don't have a quorum, but every council person who wants to attend, we can have a schedule, where the community can really engage with council people, can really give their views and have a dialogue in order to express what they think, whether you're for it or against it, because we do need more engagement around this, and it's important that everybody in the community is heard around this. So please come for info, comments, be polite, and understand that this is a part of a process, it's not the end of the process, okay? And that is my comments. So, with that, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Yeah, do I have a second? Second, anyone?
Second.
Okay, we are adjourned. Have a great evening, everyone.